Thursday, June 12th, Media and the Westwood School Committee to order. And we'll start with the Plague of Allegiance.
Plague of Allegiance. Together by the United States of America and to the Republic of America. For which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with a perfecting justice for all.
I'd like to thank Westwood Media Center for being a great partner to us this year. They're live streaming the meeting for later viewing on their platforms. And now we'll move into reorganization of the committee.
I'd like to nominate May Plaack and his Chair of the Westwood School Committee.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I don't vote, right?
Motion passed.
All right. Any other motions?
I'd like to nominate Dory Parmley as Vice Chair of the School Committee.
Second.
Second.
All in.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Joanna French as Clerk of the Westwood School Committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, motion passed.
Great.
All right. Let's move. Name tags people.
Okay, before we move into the Superintendent's Report, I just want to recognize that today
is Kevin's last meeting with us. He has been a fabulous student representative. I think your insights have been really helpful and we've loved hearing the student perspective. You're still here next year, so we are thankful for that, but you're Chair of the Legislative Council, I hear, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm gonna be like Secretary of Legislative Council.
Oh, Secretary, yep, so, very busy. We do have this certificate to honor you, and normally what we do is we give the student rep a sweatshirt of their college they're going to. You are not going to college yet, so next year you're getting a sweatshirt when you make a decision.
Oh, really?
And we'll bring you back and we'll give it to you then. And we will not forget, right? We will not forget.
We will not forget.
But thank you very much for your, for all, everything you've done.
It's been a pleasure being here.
And the next thing, I just want to thank Amanda for an amazing year of services, Chair. You were spectacular and we all, I think, very, I speak, I think I speak for all of us when I say we very much appreciated working with you, and we do have something for you.
Oh, goodness. I don't know where it is, but it's here. Thank you. It's your own castle. I love it.
And I'll read the engraving. Chair Amanda Phillips, Westwood School Committee, 2024 to 2025. I was like, is that the right year?
So, thank you, Phil, good luck this year. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Okay, moving on to the Superintendent's Report.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate it. And so, we just want to start off, this is our last meeting of the school year, and we want to start off with just with some, some, and last meeting, of course, I forgot to change the date of what date the Superintendent's Report is, my apologies. This is the June 12th meeting, not the May 8th meeting. So, we just want to start us out with some pictures from what's happening around our schools. So, at Pine Hill here, on the left-hand side, you have our Grade Four students with their sailboats. We have our Stock Market Game winner. We've had a strong history with the Stock Market Game here in Westwood. So, 24-25, I believe, second place nationally, if I recall, coming out of Pine Hill this year, and then Project Share in Grade Two at Pine Hill as well. Moving on to the next slide, our Thurston students recently attended a STEM Day at Fenway Park, so it was a good opportunity to get out, have a great experience as a, as a team, and also learn about STEM topics at Fenway. One of the really cool things that we recently did is we did eighth-grade Book Buddies. So, these are students from Thurston, reading to first-grade students at MJ. I know from, with talking with Mike, Redman, the Principal of Thurston, talking about just watching our eighth-grade students step up to serve as, as, you know, peer role models to the, to the younger students in the district was really great, so happy to share that.
So, in our eighth grade, they're going back to the elementary schools they came from.
Okay. Yeah, so for those that didn't pick up on that on mic, so everybody in eighth grade went back to the elementary schools they came from, so.
I add also a little bit more color.
Oh, yeah, please, absolutely.
Because I have an eighth grader. They also got to select their favorite book from their childhood to read to their buddy. So, and then they had to order it from the librarian at their, the school where they were gonna read it. So, it was just, it was a nice project. Yeah.
So, very happy to share that, and really, and again, it's a, it's a great thing to have those, those experiences across schools and among kids. It's, of course, also time for Field Day, so this is a picture from Field Day at Sheehan. Happy to share that. Also, Sheehan recently had their STEAM Week. Thank you to the volunteers to help make that happen, as students rotated through engaging activity stations. I know I was there when our Grade Three students were making their Rube Goldberg machines. You can see some examples of that with some of the younger kids here with STEAM Week. So, again, thank you to our volunteers for that. And of course, J-Term is going on at the high school right now, so picture of, pictures of a myriad of opportunities happening at J-Term. Kevin, if you don't mind me asking you what, I, I heard you talking, I think, with, with Tony beforehand, but about what you're doing in J-Term this year.
I've got hikes and checks.
Oh, nice, good one.
I was in the tasking field, I was walking up and down.
Very cool. I know Caitlin, you had shared some experience being up in some of the J-Term experiences earlier today, if you just want.
Yeah, I took a walk through the high school to see what was going on today, and I got, I, I walked into a classroom where they were learning magic tricks. I didn't realize that one of our high school teachers is also a magician, and so the students were learning magic tricks, and students were demonstrating what they could do with card tricks. We have rock band going on, I see a picture of it. They were playing a Rolling Stones song that they had learned yesterday, and they were doing a fabulous job for having learned the song yesterday. I saw, gosh, what else? Mystery solving, I saw Asian culture, I saw painting. There was a, a painting class going on, and so students had already completed three different projects through the painting class and were well into another one that they had each. Everyone had a little bit of a different take on it, but they had gone through the process to ideate and then create. So, yeah, I had a ton of fun walking around today and ended up going back in to see the progress that had been made over the course of just one day. Students were really engaged and it was fun to see.
It's also athletic season time. Congratulations to our MIA All-State Champs in the Girls' 4x800 with a time of 9:17, so that's Tia Pagnati, Maeve Gavin, Susanna Rockers, and Haley Cashman. So, congratulations to the four of them. Unfortunately, all of our teams, as of yesterday, are now, are now out of the tournaments, but congratulations to our girls and boys lacrosse teams that both made the final, both made the Final Four, both made the semifinals. Girls have obviously been there a lot, boys, this is their first time ever making it that far in the tournament. Our baseball and softball teams also made the, the Sweet Sixteen, so congratulations to our folks across the board there. And then we also celebrate staff this time of year. So, we recently had our, we had our milestone ceremony earlier this week, and so here are our 10-year recipients, people who've been in the district 10 years on the left, 15 years on the right, 20 on the left, 25 on the right. It's interesting, last year, my first time doing our milestone ceremony, we only had one staff member at 30 years. We had four this year.
Aww.
And so, I want to acknowledge.
Mr. Foley.
The four of them. So, Pat Foley at Martha Jones, Chris McDonough at Martha Jones, Mary Alice Masood at the High School, and Judy Morgan at Pine Hill, who've all been here 30 years. But 30 was not the limit of how far we went with the milestone ceremony this year. So, Allison Doc Sanders, 40 years. She hit her 40-year milestone this year, and we have another staff member who wanted to remain anonymous for this presentation, but who had more than 40 years as a milestone. So, I will, congratulations to, to everyone in the district. I also want to thank all of our retirees, and so this includes some folks that retired earlier this year. But Deb Oarscott, a physical therapist across the district, 26 years. Glenn Atkinson, psychologist department head, 19 years. Matt Gillis, 33 years, current athletic director. Betsy Huestead, instructional aide at Thurston, eight years. Joe Kearns, network manager, 22 years. Nancy Malatesta, counselor in pre-K for 12 years. Mary Alice Masooda, high school, 30 years. Lynn Porter, instructional aide at Pine Hill, 24 years. Allison Sanders, doc teacher at Thurston, 40 years. Tricia Shores, SLP at the preschool, 23 years. Deb Song and Murray, instructional aide, 27 years. Tom Wadikis, instructional aide at Thurston, 10 years. And Jocelyn Wallach, occupational therapist, 26 years. Collectively, 300 years of service to our students here in Westwood, so congratulations to all of them as they're retiring, and they, they have our internal gratitude for what they've done for the community here. So, thank you to everybody there. And with that, again, I, I want to thank everybody there, and I'm sure you join me in echoing those thanks as well.
Absolutely.
And so, I do want to transition to the next part of our, the Superintendent's Report, which is our strategic plan update, but I just want to pause if there's anything sort of on the spin around town.
Anything else?
No.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
All right, so let's, let's dive into the meaty part of our strategic planning update here. So, we've been talking about this throughout the course of the year. A couple of months ago, we talked about assembling the strategic planning team, and I'm happy to share the first outcome of that planning tonight. I'm going to remind us of our previously approved Portrait of a Westwood Graduate. Ultimately, the purpose of a strategy, our goal is that we want to develop a strategic approach to our proven planning in the district to allow us to achieve the outcomes identified in the Portrait of a Graduate, where we want students to think critically and creatively, we want them to communicate and collaborate, we want them to act with integrity, and we want them to engage locally and globally. So, as a strategic planning team, and again, this is the, the framing of the plan, is that we have focal areas that are broad areas of focus, we have strategic priorities within those focal areas, those are multi-year priorities that are aligned with our Portrait of a Graduate, and then we're going to identify the action steps, which are the specific steps with outcomes to be taken that are aligned with those strategic priorities. So, what we're going to talk about tonight is the focal areas that we've developed and identified. The strategic priorities are in the, we did a lot of brainstorming as a strategic planning team. We're going to be vetting those with our Admin Council when we, we have our full-day administrative treating, full-day administrative meeting next week, and then we'll bring those to the committee over the summer for some additional review. And then our action steps, we're going to start brainstorming those next week, and we'll work to finalize those in the, in the late summer. So, this shows you that structure, the focal areas, the strategic priorities, the action steps, and there has been some back and forth between the work of the strategic planning team and vetting that with the Admin Council. The focal areas really came from the strategic planning team. The action steps is the nuts and bolts of how we do things really need to be the domain of our, of our admin team, and the strategic priorities actually kind of bounce back and forth a little between the both. I, you know, I'll have more to say about this later. We actually, Joanna and Dory are both part of this process. We were hoping to reach some consensus at our last meeting, and we didn't, and that's okay, and that happens organically sometimes. So, we're going to do some vetting with our Admin Council, and we'll bring them back, Strategic Planning Team, a little bit later. So, we developed with the team an initial draft of focal areas. We did an exercise called Back to the Future, where we said, if we've accomplished everything in our Portrait of a Graduate, what are the experiences that our students and our system will have had in the past to allow us to achieve this in the future? And with that in mind, we brainstormed a whole bunch of ideas, we figured out how we kind of clumped these together into big buckets. We went through a number of iterations of that, we looked at some data around where we are as a district to identify these focal areas, again, vetting them through the Admin Council. So, we identified four key focal areas and descriptors for, excuse me, for each. Let's take a, there, I'll fix. Those four areas are student voice and agency, authentic, relevant learning experiences, rigorous, high-quality core instruction, and robust learning environments. And to flesh those out a little bit more, so student voice and agency is really about, and I hate reading slides, but I think the words here are so important, I'm going to read the slide because it's good to both read it and internalize it verbally. Our scholar, as scholars in the classroom and as members of a dynamic community, students and staff alike are constantly asking, whose voice is being heard and whose voice is missing? Educators design lessons and experiences that amplify the diversity of our students, encourage curiosity and creative thinking, and offer students a myriad of ways to demonstrate their learning. All students at all levels know their voice matters and actively contribute to the continuous improvement of the school system. So, that's a description of student voice and agency. When we talk about authentic, relevant learning experiences, it's at all levels and content areas, or, excuse me, at all levels and content areas, students can confidently explain why what they are learning is important and how it is preparing them for future learning or life experiences. Educators collaborate with one another and with community partners to create interdisciplinary, project-based, and/or experiential learning experiences that culminate in authentic products and culturally relevant learning for students. Students leave the Westwood Public Schools feeling prepared for increasing independence both academically and in life. Our third is rigorous, high-quality core instruction. Students learn critical content knowledge as well as the transferable skills and habits of a lifelong learner. Educators are experts of their craft, exhibiting diverse perspectives, collaborating with colleagues to plan excellent learning experiences. Student learning goals and activities are rigorous for every child and aligned with standards and best practices. Carefully calibrated assessments demonstrate student progress towards mastery of those learning outcomes. Educators prioritize their own professional growth to continuously revise and improve their practice, and educators and school leaders are constantly analyzing students' learning data to ensure all students are successful. And then finally, robust learning environments. Our school buildings and educational resources work in tandem to support excellent instruction and deeper learning for all students. The culture in all learning environments is one that celebrates continuous growth in learning. Educators and students alike look forward to being in our spaces, they feel a sense of belonging, and share a collective responsibility for upholding the positive culture of learning. So, there's a lot there, right? And ultimately, our goal, as we go through the, the strategic priority piece, is how do we take these broader statements and bring them down to specific goals, right? Or specific priorities and action steps that identify that. So, I will say, for example, in the area here of robust learning environments, I would certainly, and maybe I'm presupposing something here, but I would certainly anticipate that one of our strategic priorities here will be to implement, will be to identify and implement and execute the work out of our master facility study, right? I, I think that's a clear strategic priority. I don't think that's going to require a whole lot of debate to say that's something we need to do. How we flesh out the action steps in that, right? We want to have that conversation. Areas here around authentic, relevant learning experiences, talk about, how do we look at, they might be, how do we look at our assessment practices? How do we make sure that our curriculum review process is, is really embedding multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate their learning, right? So, those are the kinds of things that we're continuing to work out to flesh out the prioritization there, but wanted to provide, this is the context of where those focal areas are. So, before I acknowledge to the members of the, because there's a lot here, before I thank the members of the strategic planning team, I do want to pause here for comments or questions, right? I think probably, or Joanna and Dory, since you've been part of this work, to add some additional context or framing around where we are and what we've done.
I, I really was very impressed with the process and how the administrative leaders, you, Caitlin, Mike, and Latifah organized our group discussions, so that we've really got, you pulled a lot of information out of the, the members of the planning team in a way that I think was really helpful, and always ensured that everyone there had an opportunity to speak. So, we had students on this committee, and the students really felt like they had an opportunity to speak. We looked at data, it was a very robust process, and I came away, we shared how we were feeling about the process at the beginning and at the end, and I think the hope and the excitement and the enthusiasm was evident throughout the process. It was, it was a really, it was a great process.
No, I, I would agree with that. I particularly really liked hearing from our students, actually, and I loved that the entire group, I think, was really, not that we didn't align on everything, but I think even from our very first conversation, the idea of the kind of hands-on interdisciplinary learning experiences where students have the opportunity to sort of engage, you know, outside the classroom as well, I thought was really striking, and came at a time where I had also attended like a Future of the Workforce Conference, and that was what everybody at that conference was talking about, so it sort of reinforced that Westwood's moving in the right direction. And I, it was just, it was just really great timing, but the, the student conscient, not to knock anybody else that was there, but it was just so interesting to hear their perspectives and what they value.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? There's one thing, actually, that surprised me that I didn't see. In the previous plan, we had something on healthy and supportive school environment. I didn't see anything like whole child and thinking about that side of the equation.
Yeah, so, we had some conversation around that. I think that those, it's embedded in a couple of areas. I think it's embedded within the, the focal area around student voice, when we think about, you know, every student, every student's voice mattering, whose voice is missing, part of that. I think within robust learning environments, that's not, I mean, my, the example I gave was one around physical infrastructure, but this is also around belonging. And so, I think it's, we're kind of shoehorning two different things. Although I do see a relationship between the physical infrastructure of a learning environment and the, how it supports students there, but really, the place where that, I think, lives more is in this area. I also would anticipate that when we talk about rigorous, high-quality core instruction, we're going to talk about, you know, our bridge study, for example, talked about multi-tiered systems of support, and that's not just around the academic systems of support, but that's around the social-emotional systems of support. That certainly lives in here about how we build out, just trying to.
I guess, why not call it out more? Because, I mean, I'm on the school committee, I can't even find it. I mean, it's just a, it's just an observation, and it's something we've been talking about for a long time, and I don't think we've solved it.
Yes, I think you'll see it in the action steps.
Yeah.
Or, excuse me, in the strategic priorities, even if they're not in the naming of the focal areas.
Yeah, if I can add on that. I mean, we, we did, in the, the next, the next phase of this work, which was identifying those, you know, the actions that follow, we brainstormed a lot on what, you know, what would that look like, how would we take the action on that, and SEL, emotional support, supporting the, the whole child, that came up in conversation too, for sure.
So, let me thank the members of the strategic planning team. Again, I hate reading slides, but I'm going to read them just to thank the people that are there. So, Caitlin Ahern, Serena Anthony Polly, Helena Breznick, Hillary Carpanella, Jane Chen, Katie Clark, Amy Davenport, Latifah Frank, Joanna French, Deb Gallagher, Carlos Garmendia, Erin Kelly, Ashley LaCavala, Sarah Liu, Glenise Moya, Hank Murray, Dory Parmley, I'm going to skip over me, Mike Redman, Susanna Rockers, Mary Kate Stimson, and Ashani Tawari. And I do want to echo the comments that particularly Sarah, Hank, and Susanna, as the, as our three students, who, and how much they contributed, was fantastic, so appreciated them all being a part. And I think, again, this is a deviation of how we've done this process in the past. I, you know, I think it's really, this is ultimately something that's got to live and breathe in the community, and so we wanted to make sure that different voices were represented. And it was particularly interesting, the last exercise we did, where we were hoping to reach consensus on those strategic priorities, we gave people different colored dots to spend their priorities on by what their role is, and it was really interesting to see where parents and caregivers spent their dots versus where teachers spent, versus where administrators spent, versus where students spent. And so, that was, that was really helpful and illuminating to us in the process as well, so. So, thank you to everybody with that, and we look forward to sharing more in the future, so.
All right, anything further on that? All right, well, we want to thank you too, Tim.
Yeah, thanks.
You got to thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're moving on to the collective bargaining update.
Sure, so I am happy that, A, there are no slides, and B, we can say that we have reached successful agreements with both the Westwood Teachers Association and with the Westwood Administrative Assistance Associations. Both of those contracts were agreed to, both unions have ratified the contracts earlier this week. You can see that it's an action item for the school committee to take at the end of this meeting. So, I want to thank both bargaining teams for coming to the table in a, in a way that was about how we solve problems collectively. I certainly want to thank the members, certainly of their bargaining teams, I want to thank the members of our bargaining teams for their time and dedication effort as well, and I'm happy that it's behind us and, and we can move forward with, with labor peace, so. So, thank you to everybody that's involved.
Thank you, Tim, and we will be voting on that in action items. Okay, moving into public participation, just a reminder, this is the opportunity for residents to come and speak to the school committee. Remarks are limited to three minutes, and we ask if you are going to come up to give your name and address before speaking. So, is there anyone who'd like to participate? All right, whoever wants to go first.
Thanks, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Greg Kelly, 79, Hierarch Lane. I have some comments related to the ongoing facility study. I just want to say that I'm disappointed with the lack of progress that's been made with the facility study towards a new school building project. We have been, we began discussing the facility study in May of 2024, acknowledging then that there were already significant known needs at both Thurston and Sheehan. And at the time, the draft master plan from Doran Whittier was expected in December of '24 with development of a district strategy in the winter and spring of '25. In the 13 months that have passed since then, we've had to make an emergency upgrade of the electrical panel at the Sheehan School that's no longer manufactured, repair a leaking roof on the modulars at Thurston that are quickly approaching the end of their useful life, and evacuated Thurston twice, once due to a leaking sewage pipe, and a second time due to a leaking Bunsen burner. Instead of these events catalyzing a call to action for the committee, the delivery of the Doran Whittier report, which is the very first step in the process, slid from December to April of this year. With the exception of the virtual forum that was held last week, the community presentations and the work-together feedback has in earnest slipped to the fall of 2025, where it will now have to take place in a compressed timeframe. The only decision that's been made to date has been to prescribe a timeline based on a chance of getting MSBA funding that delays a new school opening until at least 2032, without any community input into that timeline or plans to accommodate increasing enrollment in the target school between now and then. Please consider what more you can do today to pursue the timely development of robust learning environments for our students. The school buildings are not getting any newer or more educationally appropriate while we wait, for, for our students while we wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stacy Theo-Felou. Am I supposed to say my address?
Yeah.
And I live at 10 Long Meadow Drive. Did I miss anything?
That's it.
Great. I have a request, I have a compliment to make, and I just don't want it to come out of my three minutes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, I have a graduated senior, I suppose, and I just want to thank the administration and the school committee and the teachers and staff for an unbelievable senior experience. I had no idea what to expect. I wasn't expecting anything, and it blew my mind, the experience of their last month and certainly their last week at school. And I just felt it was such a celebration of their entire time here. It was executed so well, so creatively, and there was such joy that was created, and I just want to thank everybody involved and express my gratitude. Thank you for the extra minute. Okay. And I want to say that part of it was because a lot of parents and community members participated in the all-night grad party, and they're not even allowed to have a graduating student. And that's an example of other community members paying it forward so that my child could have this amazing experience. So, I'm here right now in the same vein to pay it forward to some other members of our community. So, I wanted to share some thoughts with you about the Westwood Mandarin program, very quickly. Last year at this time, a cross-functional team of district stakeholders completed a comprehensive world language review, and their top recommendation to advance world language was to add Mandarin to the middle school. With inconsistent enrollment across grade levels, but still 39 students, the high school principal recommended eliminating the program. That proposal was then wrapped up in the budget proposal and presented as a requirement to meet the financial needs for next school year. Talking about the voice of a student, the online, an online petition was started by a student, and 500 people in our community, talking about the importance of everybody's voice, used that petition to communicate their desire to maintain our program in Mandarin. The committee members of the school committee, many stated publicly that they did not want to cut the program, but that, quote, "hard choices had to be made for cost reasons," and the program was eliminated for incoming ninth graders. And now approximately 200 students will not have the choice to study Mandarin in high school in Westwood, something they can do in most every other Massachusetts school. And since that time, there have been some developments. The Portrait of a Graduate listed global skills as a priority component, reinforcing the recommendation to expand the Mandarin program. A new teacher was hired to, to continue. A new teacher was hired to continue the program for existing students that are already in Mandarin, but not incoming ninth graders. And I hear really good things about the new teacher and a lot of excitement from students for next year. In the May PTO meeting that I attended, the high school strongly, the high school principal strongly expressed at least five times that the program was not cut at all due to costs.
Got about 15 seconds.
Okay, I find this to be a critical distinction, because I believe if the school committee was presented with the problem, outside of the budgetary context, the committee would have wanted to discuss and understand the underlying issues. Instead, by wrapping this issue in with the budget, the committee was forced to make a cut. So I asked the committee to reconsider the collateral damage of cutting the program for incoming ninth graders and to use a thoughtful process, such as proposed by Superintendent P O R going forward, and take the time over the next year to consider the program before cutting it for the ninth graders. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to say my name, sorry.
Name and address.
That's all right. Eileen Segal, 257 Alder Road. I actually wanted to just say how pleased I am. And this is actually the first time, I think, I'm, I'm speaking as an actual current student parent, because my daughter now intends, now attends the Westwood Integrated Preschool. And I just wanted to say, I'm very pleased at the information that was presented by the facility studied, and I feel that it was thorough. And as a preschool parent myself, and with a child that actually qualified in January, and I'm openly sharing that my daughter qualified, because I'm, I'm very proud of her, for her hard work. But I, I think that I'm super grateful that time was given to assess those challenges and the things we had going on for our littlest learners in terms of admissions and population and needs, because the, as an educator myself, the data shows if we get the, the kids earlier and give them what they need, they flourish faster, and it, it's just much better for our entire learning community. So I was so grateful that that was prioritized this winter. I also wanted to share that, for myself, being here and hearing that all of our schools are safe and all of our schools are well-maintained, again, so grateful. And I will also say, I, I wasn't surprised. I, I think Westwood does a great job of pivoting and reprioritizing when we have schools and members and students that need things, and really figuring out what is truly, has to be addressed in that moment. And sometimes agendas have to shift, because these are children. And I also just wanted to say, as we move forward, I really appreciate taking time. I remember when we did the school change and how much thought and planning was done, and how teachers were given opportunity, and students were given opportunity, and parents. And there were collaborative groups and, and virtual feedback and in-person feedback. And then the leadership would come together and talk about the feedback and adjust and give new, new proposals. And I just wanted to share how grateful I am for taking the time, really thinking about hearing all the members of the community, really thinking about what's best, so we can just, I don't know, just figure out the best plan for, for our children. And like I said, I'm invested, because she's only four, so, thanks, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, with that, we'll close public participation, and we will move on to the chair update and liaison reports. I don't have much to report. Amanda, do you have anything to report?
As outgoing chair, I do not. Liaison report, I can just speak to that for a minute. Dory and I were able to attend the cellphone task force, and that was a phenomenal event. There were so many people across the district, across the community, that invested so much time in that. And there were about 25 or so parents or caregivers there. And it was a really kind of robust discussion. I learned a lot, and I'm so excited, you know, to continue the work in the fall. So I don't know if you have anything to add, Dory?
No, I thought it, it went well. I think, you know, I've heard really good feedback that the people that were, our panelists, were really well-chosen, and they were prepared, and had all really good, different and relevant things to share. It was taped by Westwood Media. And I checked the other day, and I think it had received over 80 views, which is great. I hope more people take the time to view it, because there was a lot of good information shared. And I think it's just the, the beginning of sort of community conversations around cellphones and social media, so.
Great. Anyone else with a liaison update?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something else, building on what Tim said. I just want to reiterate thanking the, the partnership we had with the negotiating team, the teachers' contract, Matt Shineletit and Kate O'Reilly, and just the entire team. You know, it's not always, collective bargaining isn't always a fun process, but I think just their professionalism, collaboration to get this end goal, so we can kind of continue to go forward. So I just want to reiterate that.
And thanks to the members of this committee who were on that as well.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. I know, I know.
Yeah, I echo what Tony said, it was, it was a very thoughtful, thorough, collaborative, but with integrity and, yeah, very productive.
Great. Kevin, any updates?
Legislative council, we elected new leadership, so it's going to be me, Ethan Lee, and Teo Pagnoni, who I think was also one of the four by, four by 800.
Yes.
Me, winner, so.
Great. All right, happy for the school year to be done?
Yeah.
We're all limping in there, right? All right, anything else? Okay, I'll move on to discussion items. First item is the 2025-2026 class size, always a fun topic.
Sure, yeah, so you have a memo in your packet around updating class sizes. And, you know, the challenge that we have identified here, and, and we talked about this during the budget process, is that kindergarten, the ability to use the census to project kindergarten numbers that certainly exist in this community pre-COVID does not exist anymore. So we made the, the best estimates we could at the time that we built the budget. Unfortunately, we have, or I guess fortunately for the health of the system and the community, but unfortunately, from a budgetary perspective, enrollment at both Downey and Martha Jones, incoming, excuse me, incoming kindergarten enrollment at both Downey and Martha Jones is greater than we had anticipated and budgeted for in the FY '26 budget. So as of the writing of my memo on June 6th, we had allocated two classroom sections, each at Downey and MJ. Downey was already at 49 students, which if we maintain two sections, is 24 and 25 per classroom. MJ was at 45 students, which is 22 and 23 per classroom. And we know that we still have the summer months where registrations may continue to trickle in. Pine Hill is at 72, that's four classrooms of 18. Sheehan is at 38, that's two classrooms of 19. Those are well within our guidelines, and we're comfortable with those numbers. But we really, I think at this point, have no choice but to contemplate adding a kindergarten classroom each at Downey and MJ, based upon where the enrollment is. You can see in the memo what the cost impact of that is. That's two FTE kindergarten teachers at roughly $170,000, and also bringing on two instructional aides at about $60,000. So that's a $230,000 hit. We know we have a budget that is already approved, and so whatever we identify for a solution has to be budget neutral at this point in time. So we've been able to capture about half of that delta, half of that $230,000 through turnover savings. Those are people that had decided to exit the district either through retirement or through another means, and what we anticipate their replacement cost coming in at a lower value of $115,000. Were able to reallocate one IA based upon shifting of students' needs, that's another $30,000. But that leaves an $85,000 delta that we will need to take in another elementary classroom reduction of the district. When we looked at this, I mean, all of the classes were built in a consistent manner with the class size guidelines established by the committee, which are 22 students in grades K through two, 24 students, or excuse me, K through two, 24, 24, K through three, excuse me, 24 students in grades four and five. So there is no way to make that reduction without pushing up against the cap, excuse me, pushing up against the guidelines. It's important to recognize that this is not a hard cap that the committee has set. Just as an example, a year ago, sort of as I came on, the decision was made in the summer of 2023, when we had increase in kindergarten enrollment at MJ, we consolidated two Deerfield classes prior to Pine Hill into one that became one classroom of 25 in the fifth grade. And we also know, and I think to a point that was raised earlier, our younger students are the ones that we want to make sure that, that, I, I think that, and that's why the school committee identifies class sizes that are lower for the younger students, that's a place that we also want to prioritize. So looking, your chart shows what the numbers are with the current budget situation. The, the places where the minimum, the reduction of a classroom are least impactful from a quantity perspective, in terms of being closest to guidelines, are in grade four and grade five at Sheehan. I want to thank Kristin Evans for our conversations around this. Mathematically, from a purely mathematical perspective, there are 50 students in grade four, there are 51 in grade five. Purely mathematically, grade four is the place where that reduction would be taken. But we don't teach ma, well, we do teach math, but we, we, we teach students, though, right? I almost said something that was not true. But we teach students not, not numbers instead of students, right? And so when we looked at what the, when we looked at, at, when we took the needs of students into consideration, and again, in coordination, and again, I want to thank Kristin for her partnership at Sheehan, we made the decision to take the reduction in grade five at Sheehan for next year. That will mean class sizes that are above guidelines. At the same time, we're maintaining the level of literacy and math support in the building as well, too, consistent with the school committee policy around class size. And, you know, we have some really fantastic educators in grade five at Sheehan, too, that will continue to work with the students there. So this is a budget-neutral solution to a challenge. It allows us to, again, make sure that we have a, a focus on our younger learners, but be able to maintain a high-quality environment for all students. So happy to answer any questions you have about this, but certainly wanted to talk about this publicly as we get to the end of the year here, and to try to be ahead of it, honestly, so.
I have one comment, but not related to this, kind of related to this, but go ahead and talk about it.
So I, two, two thoughts on this. So first, when we've done this in the past, when we've sort of come out of guidelines, we've always said, you know, that classroom is going to sort of have like a, we'll have a line of sight on that classroom.
Yeah.
And I know Kristin will, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we're all aware of that, that, that we're going to be watching that classroom very carefully, or that grade, I should say.
Those classrooms, yeah.
The classrooms. The other thing I wanted to say is, I think this is now the third or fourth year in a row where we've underestimated kindergarten because of the census. And I think that maybe going forward, when we're building the budget, we should just assume that the census is woefully under and build in 20 more students or per grade, or whatever we think we need to do, because I feel like we're having this conversation every June. And, you know, you've only been here two years, but we've had it before you. And so I think that if we can kind of get ahead of it and build it in, we're not going to be in this situation.
Yeah, so as, as a reminder of how we build it, we actually, the census numbers, the numbers you see here, we intentionally did not use the census numbers when we built the budget. We assumed level enrollment in kindergarten. And so the number of sections we allocated for kindergarten for the, for the coming year were based upon essentially this year's actual enrollment, as opposed to census numbers. The challenge is we had unanticipated increased enrollment, particularly at Downey and MJ, knowing that the census is essentially an irrelevant tool for budget planning right now.
Yeah.
The question about building in contingencies, right, when, you know, we all talked about the tight budget situation we were in in building the FY '26 budget. While in an ideal world, we might be able to build a contingency in at the elementary classroom level, that would have meant making a further reduction someplace else in the budget at that point in time, in order to accommodate that. Right, so there, there are trade-offs with that, but, you know.
Right, I, I understand that, but I also think that it's, it might be easier if we're in a position to reallocate as opposed to, you know, I, I don't know, I just feel like we're, we're having this conversation every June. And I think maybe we just look at the budget building, and maybe we say we're going to prioritize contingencies in school, in classrooms, to avoid this kind of problem every year, and find something else. But I think it's a conversation worth having back in October, November, when we start building the budget, as opposed to now.
Yeah, I would agree with that, and I, and I think, just for sort of clarity, like, the turnover savings were a contingency for one class going over. The problem is we've had two.
Right, but every year.
And so, yeah, and, yeah. Yeah, no, your point is well-taken, right, as we, as we talk about this, so.
Anyway.
I guess I got another idea on top of that. This one's, Kevin always loves my ideas.
Bracing herself.
Why don't we start kindergarten registration in October next year? It's not going to give, be perfect, because people roll in all year, but at least it gives us, is there any reason, why do we start in March? Why don't we start in October? Because at least we'll give us additional data coming into budget season.
I, my reaction is I've never heard that concept before, and I, I don't know if there's something that prohibits it or not.
I mean, I'm saying this serious.
Yeah, no.
We do a campaign around it, putting ads in the news, I mean, I'm actually somewhat serious.
Yeah, no, and, and I, and I take it with a level of seriousness. I don't, I would have to research.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know, it's an interesting idea to contemplate, though.
I guess some parents know their kids are ready for kindergarten within, like, the next year, but some parents are not.
Fair enough, fair enough. It's not perfect, but we might as well start in October as opposed to March, I mean, gives us some data.
Yeah.
I don't know.
It's an interesting thought, so.
See, it's not, not everything I say is crazy.
I love your ideas.
I also wonder if, you know, we, in our facility study, we did our demographics review, and we had an idea of these increasing, you know, populations around the district. Is there any, you know, can we take, can we, in our projections, can we couple our budget planning against that as well? Just as a check?
Yeah, absolutely, right? I think the, the, I think it's a combination of that, the idea of how we think about contingency. I will say that if we, if we use the same methodology we did this year for the budget, we'd actually be building in three classrooms for K at Downey and MJ next year. Because as you can look at the, at the grades below, right, sometimes it's two, sometimes it's actually four. Downey, MJ, and Sheehan, they're kind of all just built with enrollments at the wrong size, that it's not consistently three classrooms or not consistently two classrooms. And so there's a little bit of fluctuation that happens there. But I think that, sorry, I lost my train of thought there, but my apologies. I think all the ideas are good ideas at this point in time, right? Particularly as we think about the budget planning process for next year.
Could we survey preschools? Like, to Dory's point, it wouldn't be a perfect science, because the teachers don't know what, you know, decisions families are going to make, but if we know that, you know, there's a handful of preschools that a lot of Westwood families utilize, so if we could just ask them for how many kids they expect are going to be going to kindergarten, and then that might give us a better idea, I don't know.
They're, they're all on the list for good ideas.
Okay.
And, and I do want to say, though, this chart looks very good, right? Particularly for a public school, like, these are great class sizes. You know, the two where we're out of guidance is, you know, it's just, it is what it is, it's a public school. But overall, I think that Westwood historically has had really, really good class sizes. And I also, you know, I'm hearing about other districts that have had to go for overrides, and the overrides have failed. And now, you know, this one I work with, her daughter has 35 kids in her second grade class next year. So we thankfully are not in that position, but I'd love to sort of take some of these ideas and, and see if, if we can manage this. Maybe we can't, but see if we can.
All right, anything else on class size? Okay, thanks for that work, and thanks, Kristin, as well. Miss Facilities Plan, we're going to talk about the.
Yeah, I don't know how you want to, I mean, we had the forum. I want to, I want to thank Maya and Joanna for being part of the forum with me as well. I want to thank also Lema for answering a bunch of questions, Caitlin for, for handling everything sort of behind the scenes.
That was great.
Running the admin on the forum. And, you know, I, and certainly a thank you to everybody from the community that came out as well, too. I mean, the, you know, I did a presentation sort of about the, laying out the, the, I don't remember how much exact time it was, but probably 15, 20 minutes, sort of laying out condensed version of what we had presented here publicly in April, talking about what the timeline is. Certainly gathered a bunch of questions from the community around this, and appreciate the level of engagement the community brought. We had, I think the numbers fluctuated throughout the course, but it was probably around 40 people on the, on the Zoom at any one time. I'm hoping those numbers grow substantially over time, right? And we talked about this when we met, that June is, is a little bit of a difficult time to do this. But there'll be a whole lot of different sessions in different formats as we move into the fall, and we'll do some strategizing about that going forward. But I think it's more, I think for, for, you know, Maya, you and Joanna, talk about your experiences with this as well, too, and, so. But um, I think it's more, I think for, for, you know, Maya, you and Joanna, talk about your experiences with this as well too and so.
Joanna?
Um, I think it was very informative. I think we heard a lot of differing perspectives. I, I think what could be helpful is to capture all of the questions that were asked and start to gather kind of a, a frequently asked questions or, you know, kind of Q and A that we can so that we're pulling all of these questions, because I imagine as we go through these forums, we're gonna hear a lot of these questions again, which is great because we can, you know, certainly show the information. But the, the more that we can be gathering those questions, um sharing the answers, uh, we'll just move the conversation along very productively. But I was very happy with the number of people, again, forty people on a busy Wednesday night or whatever night it was. You know, while everyone had everything else going on in their lives in June, it, it was a great, it was a great turnout. You know, we had a lot of robust conversation about um what, you, what we hope to see and we also reiterated the fact that we as a committee have not presupposed any solution and that we're truly coming to the community to have a conversation about what, you know, what should we do next? What should our next steps be? Knowing that these are, you know, projects that need to be addressed in one way or another.
Yeah, and I think I would only add, there was also a lot of discussion um sort of about the fire station. The vote had just, uh, the no vote had just occurred the day before, so there was a lot of conversation about, you know, how is this all fitting in? And I think really the only thing that we could say is that, you know, the fire station certainly has needs and the select board is, is figuring out how to address those. The schools have needs, we need, you know, we're gonna figure out how to address those. And I think just the collaboration between the town and the schools is gonna be really important as we address all of these, um, these issues. And um, we had, we, I mean, I don't know if anyone watched the select board meeting on Monday night, but there was a slide up there that showed how many municipal buildings, you know, are, are at least fifty to seventy years old and there's quite a number of them and they include town and school. And so we as a community just need to figure out what's the priority, what are the needs and just kind of all work together and make sure we're communicating um to, to put something, you know, that, that the residents like and want to embrace. Yeah, that's pretty much what we said.
Was there um, any, did you talk at all about like the timeline and the MSBA funding and, and the kind of pros and cons?
We did, we did.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can sort of address something I said at the forum, right? There is um, you know, there's some questions around accelerating the timeline, right? And I think that the challenge, you can, and, and the question about whether or not the MSBA is essential for, uh, is a necessary step as part of that process, right? I think the challenge is that while the MSBA is prescriptive in their process, even if we didn't use the MSBA, there are still processes that are prescribed by state public procurement law, particularly chapter seven, chapter one forty-nine, which are the um design law and the, and the construction law, as well as the provisions of the town charter about how things are funded, right? And so like the school committee, for example, I think you all know this, right, does not have the ability to call for an election for a, for a debt exclusion, right? That requires cooperation with the select board, that requires a town meeting, you know, so all those things would need to take place. The, for any kind of a project, it also would have to go through the permanent building committee. We would, the town would have to hire an OPM. There's a whole process and a timeline for hiring an OPM. You then have to hire a designer. You then have to actually design a building, which has not been done yet. Um, and then you would have to go through a construction bidding process where you are you're doing filed, the construction firm, you're doing filed sub bids. All those things take an extended period of time to comply with the public laws around this. And I think the other thing is, um, and this is not something I, I said at the meeting, but I, I think is really critically important. It's really, you could build a building quicker than you can build a school. And what I mean by that is you could put a, put up a cookie cutter school that doesn't actually reflect what the educational goals of the district are by not gathering input around what those goals are. But you really, if you want to have a school building that's reflective of the values of the community and what the educational mission is, then you need to have a design process that is robust and brings people in, in a way that, that is thoughtful. And it's not just replicating what somebody else has done somewhere else, right? And so I think all of that goes into it. So the reality is that maybe outside of the MSBA, you could accelerate that process by a year, year and a half. And then there were some questions, I, you know, I did some back of the envelope math around what that means financially. If we take the middle of the road um of the new building costs, it's roughly a hundred and fifty-five million dollars, assuming a five percent escalation, which is what we built into the plan. If you accelerate a year and a half, that's somewhere between ten and twelve million dollars. You might save an escalation cost to potentially pass up twenty plus, you know, twenty to thirty million dollars, let's say, of funding from the MSBA. That's a conversation that, that the committee and the community could have. But I think it's, um, it's one that there is a, um, I'm sure there are conflicting opinions around that, right? And so just kind of, that's something we talked about at the forum though, just to lay out what the, the timeline would be and what the impact of that would be from a cost perspective.
Yeah, and I think, you know, if we don't get into the MSBA program, then that's a whole nother conversation, right? Maybe, you know, that's the conversation of do we, do we still go for it? That extends the timeline even more, or do we see the appetite of the town to fund this on its own? But to Tim's point, you know, the MSBA, I mean, we, we got probably, I mean, the price tag of Pine Hill, and I, I'm gonna have final numbers for you because the project's getting closed out and hopefully in September we'll have final numbers. But the, the, the cost, the true cost of Pine Hill was like ninety-two million dollars. And between the MSBA and certain other incentives, but, you know, ninety percent of the MBA, the town is paying less than sixty million for it. So that's a huge cost savings on, on that size of a building. So I think it's probably worth the potential of a year and a half delay to go through the MSBA. If we don't get into it, you know, next, or whenever they announce it, April, when do they announce?
Uh, it's submitted in April and then it's
Yeah.
like end of the calendar, usually somewhere around there.
Yeah, um, then that's a whole nother conversation, I think.
And in the meantime, we're maintaining and caring for our buildings so that they are safe and they're you know, as, as best they can be for educational needs in the district. So I wouldn't want anyone to walk away thinking that, you know, even though our building might be a few years out, that we're not maintaining the buildings in the meantime. Of course we would be.
Thank you.
And just an ask, maybe either the next meeting or the September, it'd be helpful to actually understand the communication plan and lay that out for the commu, not just fast, but the community, like what's gonna happen this meeting, this one's in person. But we can do that, you know, and then we can communicate.
That is absolutely on the agenda for September.
I think it'd be helpful, people's lives get busy.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, um, we now move on to the superintendent evaluation. And Amanda's gonna give that as the.
Yes, so I will jump in there. I met with Tim earlier this week and we reviewed the um evaluation that we, I put together with input from the committee and from um different people on his team. So thank you to everybody for taking the time to meet with me and, and provide feedback. Um, I think it's been a phenomenal year. I think you've accomplished so much. Rolling out the facility study, the cellphone task force and the portrait of a graduate work are all like super important projects for our district. In speaking with people on your team, um, everybody kind of consistently mentioned your calm and thoughtful demeanor, um, your collaborative leadership style wherein you empower those on your team to do their best work. You're super accessible. You're always out in the community, going to sporting events, performing arts, hosting coffees. You really, it's obvious you really value community feedback and you seek it out. Additionally, everybody kind of commented about how you're a pragmatic thinker. You really value the process and um you use data to make decisions. So looking towards next year, um, we're looking forward to ramping up the response to the capital needs, of course, and continuing to work on the strategic priorities as identified tonight. And also, um, as we discussed, the creation of maybe a more formalized communication cadence. I think that would be really valuable. And then hopefully now coming into year three, you'll have more time to kind of dig into the individual schools or departments and seeing kind of strengths and areas for improvement. So thank you for everything you've done this past year. Um, our district is so much better for it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And um I appre, I certainly appreciate the, the five of you as committee members for your, um, your support, your guidance and just having a really strong working relationship. It, it is something that um is not present in every community and I really value that we have it here. So I, I thank you all for that as well as for your feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Anything else? Anyone want to add anything? All right, thanks Amanda.
Of course.
Okay, uh, moving on to action items. The first item is the approval of the May eighth meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, um, can I get a motion to ratify the memorandum of understanding with the Westwood Teachers Association? So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Um, can I get a motion to ratify the memorandum of understanding with the Administrative Assistance Association? So moved. Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And finally, can I get a vote to approve non-barg, did we want to talk about these non-bargaining rates?
Um, I can just briefly update you that um this is a process we do every year. I present then rates, proposed rates for employees who are not members of collective bargaining units. Um, and so the rates um that are presented here are listed and um I would say the increase last year for long-term subs was more substantial, but the increase this year is um kind of more in line with a typical COLA, so.
And we feel that these are market?
Yes.
Or close to market? Okay. All right. Um, can I get a motion to approve the non-bargaining rates? So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. All right, uh, is there any new business anyone wants to raise? Nope. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.